Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to come out of executive session.
Second.
Present.
Yes.
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 Certification and closed session pursuant to subsection two point two dash thirty seven twelve D of the Code of Virginia nineteen fifty. As amended, each member of the Board of Supervisors upon roll call certifies that to best of their knowledge only public business matters lawfully exempt from the open meeting requirements under the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, and only such public business matters that were identified in the motions by which the closed meeting was convened were heard, discussed, or considered in the meeting by the Board of Supervisors. Any member of the Board of Supervisors who believes that there was a departure from the requirements shall state so prior to the vote indicating substance of that departure in his or her judgment has taken place. Are there any supervisors who believe a departure has taken place? Being none, if you agree that the matters heard, discussed, or considered during the closed meeting were pursuant only to the motions by which the closed meeting was convened, please signify by saying yea or yes. Tim Lovelace?
Yes.
Lou Ann Wallace?
Yes.
Carl Ray?
Yes.
Steve Breeding?
Yes.
David Eaton?
Yes.
Horace Christian?
Yes.
Rebecca Dieh. Ma'am, you have approval to return to regular session.
All right, at this time, we'll have the invocation and remain standing for the pledge allegiance, please. Thank you, dear Lord, for giving us another day. Thank you, Lord, for the blessings that you have bestowed upon us. Lead, guide, and direct each one of us. Lord, look after our county, our state, our nation, and the world. We're in troubled times. Put your hand around us. Help us to do thy will. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen. Now we have the approval of the agenda. Do I have a motion to accept the agenda as it is?
So move, Madam Chair.
Steve, thank you. A second?
Second.
Lou? All right, all those in favor of the agenda?
Uh.
Okay, wait, roll call. Horace?
Yes.
Carl?
Yes.
Lou?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Tim?
Yes.
Rebecca? Yes. All right, now we will open the floor for our public hearing on the continuity of the government emergency ordinance. Just. Yeah, please.
Madam Chairman, on the continuity of government emergency ordinance, that is an ordinance that I drafted for you all and presented to the board and the board approved on April the sixth, two thousand twenty. Um, it 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 contains a large amount of things. One of the most important things at that time was making sure we were able to get the funding that's available through this through this um situation, and also on how to conduct our meetings remotely and with the public not being able to participate the way that we would normally do that. Um, my recommendation to the board is to formally adopt this ordinance, which again is only good for six months, and that and that goes back, in my opinion, is that that goes back to the April the sixth, so you would end up in September. Um, I I I did want to make you aware that by adopting this ordinance, you are not required to continue to hold meetings the way it's described. That's an option to you, given the circumstances. However, it does give you the flexibility if there were if if there were to be a significant outbreak to 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 hold a meeting, you know, completely remotely if necessary. But so I did want to make you aware that it's not a requirement by adopting the ordinance that the meetings have to be held that way, but it's an option given to you. And and again, this is only this this ordinance is only good for six months, and also it does contain provisions about allowing emergent emergency management services and to be able to get the applicable funding for that. So that that is why it's my my recommendation that the ordinance be formally approved tonight.
Question. Is the CARES Act money in jeopardy if this ordinance is dropped?
Everything that you're doing on this ordinance is is tied for the continuity of our operations during the COVID issue. This gives the ability for the county to order PPE and without going through the procurement act guidelines, this gives you the autonomy to be able to operate. This ordinance is only applicable to the procedures and the operations in the departments and the codes to where we can work within the autonomy to speed up our ability to operate quickly to serve the residents of Russell County. If if nothing happens during the COVID issue, it or the cases do not increase, then this will could would still give you the ability to receive resi funding from the COVID or another phase. This will be, uh, and if we do have increases in in the COVID cases, you have the autonomy to be able to go out and contractually get resources through emergency management, being able to open up facilities as needed. So it is.
I understand that. My question is, if we do away with this ordinance, could we still obtain the CARES Act money? Or the fact that we say it's not a not an emergency situation now, does that kill the the availability of that CARES Act money?
It it would be hard to sustain it, you being under emergency.
Okay.
I I think the biggest concern that most people in southwest Virginia have is they're struggling. Their small businesses are struggling. I mean, they're just, they're going, I mean, the thing about it is, you know, uh, not just small, to medium to large businesses, everybody, all of us are feeling an impact.
Yeah.
This is just our government to.
Well, I understand that's the money that comes into the county government, but I mean, what I'm saying is, where's the end of the road here, uh, to be able to to file a submission to the governor of Virginia and say, hey, look, don't treat us like northern Virginia. We want to be treated different than northern Virginia.
Well, yeah, I I agree, and I that'll be a separate issue.
That's a separate resolution.
I understand, I understand. I just want to make it clear.
Yeah. Well.
I I would like to say something here. I have talked to, um, I called Ben, um, Chafin's office. I have called Willmore Field. I have called, uh, Will Wampers. And they are petition or address the governor about ending this as soon as possible. Something may take place June, June the tenth. But this this thing we're talking about now is not regulating that. It's got to come from the governor. This is so like you say, that we can operate the county's business and everything and get the emergency funds if we need them. We this is not going to increase or decrease what the governor's doing, but we'll send want to send a a a recommendation that we do want southwest Virginia released of what we can and get back to normal life. But it's not in our hands to do that, to my understanding. It's the governor's.
The way the way I read this thing is, if it's not, if you say it's not an emergency, then that CARES Act money goes away, which is one point eight million dollars, up to one point eight million dollars. Two point three, but part of it goes to the towns, right? So our share would be one point eight. That will fill a big hole in this year's budget plus the first, the next six months of next year's budget, right? Okay. That in lieu of raising taxes.
I'm not for having this hang over our head up to September, another six months. I definitely ain't for that, and I would not vote for anything or support anything like that.
Well, that's what I'm talking about.
What you're saying, and Steve, it seem to be two different things, right?
I I agree with yours. I don't want to vote for it either, but I will not put that money in jeopardy because the the alternative of, you know, to fill that seven hundred thousand dollar hole is to raise taxes, and I won't do that. Uh, and and for the next six months, you know, uh, you know, that'll that'll fill that hole too. It's distasteful, and I despise it. I don't like it. I hate the mask. I hate everything about it. We've only had, the last case we had was, uh, the fifteenth of May, I think, so we're on that past two week trend, you know? Well, yeah, we we're just leveled. We've leveled out, and we have no active cases. Am I right, Lonzo? No active cases, which is something the state didn't keep up with, which is a real gripe and not clout.
I think we need to put the pressure on the governor to do his action.
And again, this 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 particular ordinance, and that's why I wanted to make you all aware, it's not a requi, it doesn't require you to do anything. It it allows you to to adapt to certain situations, and and I can understand you. You say you don't want to do, you don't want the ordinance to be in effect until September. Well, you can repeal it at any time. It's just my advice right now to not do that, because you don't want to be in a situation where you might have to reenact it and go through this whole process again. And and when I say the six month, that's as long as this will last. It only lasts for six months, and then the ordinance is no longer, um, valid. But this 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 ordinance does not require masks or did not require anything. It just allows the board to meet, and like I said, even with the ordinance in effect, if you wanted to go back and meet normal next month, you could do that, so.
Yeah, the mask wearing is required from the governor, or he encouraged, but he don't even abide by his own suggestions.
Well, I thought they were mandatory now.
Yeah.
They're mandatory now.
Yep.
It didn't matter.
Oh, okay, but.
Didn't matter.
Madam Chair, may I interject something, please?
Yes, dear.
Um, we're digressing here. What we're looking at now is the continuity of governance. That is what we're looking at and solely what we're looking at. We're not looking at whether we like a mask or not. We're not looking at putting people back to work or not. This has nothing to do with private business. This has everything to do with how we run the government during an emergency. So everything that we are discussing is moot point.
I agree, I agree, Lou Ann, but in my mind, in my mind, it, uh, it's about the money. I mean, and 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 it's all it's about, you know, and and I'm all for going back to the way we're meeting before, you know, after this, if that's allowed under this ordinance.
Right.
Then you deal with the governor.
I think that as we move into another phase, I think that we should be able to tweak how we meet. I don't have a problem with that. But I don't think what what we're talking about today is getting, doing away with it. Um, Steve, I'm talking to you guys. Hello? So anyway, when we're not, when we're not doing the right thing by trying to stay, um, with how the government is working, and that is exactly how Lonzo stated it, to be able to buy things without us coming together and make a decision, a snap decision, to be able to keep Dr. Sue Cantrell in the position that she's in, uh, as the head of the emergency management. I think this is important. I think this is important to the people that we represent.
Mm-hmm.
And and it does not have anything to do with opening a private business or closing one. That is the governor.
Yes. All right, Katie, you need a motion to?
Public.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's open?
And see, if I can just read the first line of this, and that way, there is two resi, there is emergency of continuity of government on the agenda tonight. There's also a resolution to proceed to Phase Three. What y'all were talking about, that's part of the resolution that's down in the agenda. This says this, emergency ordinance allow the continuity of government operations, and it has nothing to do with the public, during the pandemic to alter alter the processes for conducting public meetings, restricting the use of public buildings or facilities, providing additional powers to the director of emergency management to incur cost or weigh procedures or take additional actions or deadlines. This is just a an ordinance put in place to be able to say that we can remove some of those barriers to get what we need for the sheriff's department or the schools, or what we need to get for emergency management or PPE. Now, what y'all are talking about as far as the business resolution, that's down in the agenda later on. Yes.
All right, are there any comments from the public? Sir, would, is? They speak? Mike? Okay. Does anyone want to speak? Anyone in the public want to speak? Please?
This is Daniel Mead, uh, and.
Okay. Okay, thank you, sir. State your name and your address, please, for the.
Daniel Mead, two forty-one Griffith Drive, Castlewood. I have a question. Are you going to use this money for PPE for eight cases that don't even exist in Russell County at this point? Are you going to use this money to balance your budget when you all have culpability and not been able to cut anything from this budget? Because it seems to me that you would have that ability, the want to do that. We have had eight cases in Russell County. I know what you all are saying is true, and that, you know, this gives you the ability to do this, that, and the other, but let's let's call a spade a spade here. You're going to use this money to balance a budget for mistakes that you've made in the past. I just find it, I I find it highly unusual that the Cumberland Health District, that's four counties, has had zero point zero eight percent of the cases in the entire state. We can sit up here all day long and say, well, Governor Northman's going to do this, Governor Northman's going to do that. He doesn't realize that southwest Virginia extends a hundred fifty miles past Roanoke. He doesn't give a crap about us, and I get what y'all are trying to do. This is money to balance the budget, and that's all I've got to say. But this is this is pathetic, that we continue this government overreach. I took an oath to defend this constitution against the enemies, both foreign and domestic. And in my entire time in the military, I have never seen an assault on this constitution like local leaders, both state and government.
Anyone else wants to speak?
My name's Larry Hughes. I live at thirty eighth Hall Drive, Lebanon, Virginia. And I I'm going to ask the board to consider stopping this ordinance, this county ordinance. I think it's an overreach. Again, I know you're saying that you, well, there might be emergency. There might be. If there is, you can always reconvene and reestablish this ordinance. But I think we need to send a message to Richmond and the surrounding counties about this. We, it's time to open up Russell County. I know this is not a business decision. It's a it's a government decision, but this is a point that government, you can get involved. You can help us. If you'll stand up and and be brave enough and and honor the constitution as you says you would, you need to step forward and do this. Enough is enough. We we are, your citizens are suffering. You work for the citizens of this county. You don't may not believe that, but you do. Read your constitution. It tells you exactly what you do. We we, as your citizens, we ask you to step forward, do your job. Now, I want to know why do we have a Dr. Sue Cantrell as the county manager or, uh, emergency manager? I thought Jess Powers was Russell County Emergency Manager. When did you bring this other lady in? Why? Has she been paid a salary by the county to do this when we already got a gentleman on phone staff? What's going on? Are you going to have to answer this? Your elections are coming up. It's no threat. It's the truth. It is coming. We're going to watch what you do. We're tired of you doing what you want to do. Will you please? We are going to step up. We are going to let you know we are, you're wrong. We expect you to act as a honorable citizen that we expect you to be, and vote the way you should be. Vote the conscience of your citizens. Thank you.
Anyone else wants to speak?
I'm Mark Rose, one seventy-three Conley Street, apartment seven in Lebanon, Virginia. This is my comments. I am a man who believes in freedom and liberty. The citizens of Russell County should have the right to choose what is best for them. I'm opposed to the overreach coming out of Governor Northman's office in Richmond related to COVID nineteen. The economy is port, and it is important during these challenging times. I urge the Board of Supervisors to openly oppose the governor's actions. This pandemic is being too politicized. You all need to be open-minded when it comes to the citizens' concerns. Our cu, our county needs to be reopened. Our low number of confirmed cases reflect that fact. Morale is down. Families are struggling. Businesses are struggling. We need you all to stand up for us.
Anyone else?
My name is Jeff Hicks. I live at thirty-eight Spring Ridge Court, Lebanon, Virginia. As an as an ORI, and I work in four of the major hospitals in this area. You guys have declared a state of emergency along with the governor. For what? I work in these hospitals. These hospitals are half empty or more. They're about closed. I'm losing time every week because I can't even go to work because I'm supposed to be covered up with COVID patients to take care of. They're not out there. They're not in Russell County, and y'all know this. You're going to take money from a governor to balance your budget because you guys didn't do it, you guys sitting up there didn't do it right to start with, and you're going to shut all these businesses down in Russell County because we can't go out and eat and do the things we need to do to support them. How many people out here are you giving this money to? Are you giving it to the businesses to keep them open? No, you're not going to give it to them. You're going to sit on it, and you're going to do what you want to do with it. Now, all these businesses are going to close. What are y'all going to do next year when the governor doesn't pad your pockets? What about all the tax money you're going to lose? You think you're mismanaging now. You're going to make this move, and you're going to be in worse shape four or five years from now. Manage the money correctly. Open up our businesses. Do away with the state of emergency, because I'm here to tell you there's not one.
Anyone next? Another person? Another citizen's comment? All right, seeing none, we will close the, uh, comments on the continuity of government emergency ordinance. All right, all right, do we have a motion to?
I'll make a motion.
Horace, all right, do we have a second?
Second.
Motion to accept the continuity of, to approve the continuity of government emergency ordinance. All right, do we have a second?
I second it.
Who is that?
Carl.
Carl, thank you. All right, any more comments from airboard? All right, all those in favor of accepting the continuity of government emergency ordinance? Start with Horace?
Yes.
Carl?
Yes.
Lou?
Yes.
David?
No.
Uh, Steve?
Yes.
Rebecca? Yes. Tim?
Yes.
All right, all right, thank you. Next thing we have on our public hearing is, yes. They're on, okay. Yeah, they'll be fine. All right. The next item that is on our public hearing for the public comments on our, um, twenty twenty-one, um, budget. The floor is now open for any public comment on our twenty twenty-one public comment budget. And if you want, please state your name and address if you have a comment on the public hearing on our budget. All right. Any public comment on our twenty twenty-one budget? Seeing none? I'll close there. Okay, go ahead, ma'am. State your name, please, and address. Thank you. All right, I'm sorry. Can you say that again?
Emma Adams, sixty-six Norfield, Virginia, Lebanon.
All right, thank you.
Would like to let all you board and members know that, um, we appreciate your time, but the numbers will grow. Our voices will be heard, and there will be elections soon, so we will take a stand, and we will stand together as American citizens of the United States that our forefathers had put in place for governor, and we will stand for the right reasons, and we will stand together and not let these tyrants tear our rights down. As a community and the Board of Supervisors, we would expect you to stand behind us in our community as all these other communities are having warfare and problems. We are asking for peaceful assembly and reopen our businesses and to work with our people here in Russell County and the surrounding counties so that these small businesses can go back to work and people can make a living. That's all I have to say.
All right, anyone else in the public have a comment to discuss about the public or budget? Okay, all right, seeing none, we will close the public comment on our twenty twenty-one proposed budget. Okay. Lonzo, she wants the microphone, please.
The next public hearing you have, Madam Chairman, is for the, um, conveyance to some property from, um, to, that's going to be used at the Honecker High School. It's, um, property at Thompson Creek that's right beside the Honecker High School. Um, this is a, um, a piece of property that was purchased, um, um, for the school. The school is, um, I'm going to, um, the school board is going to, in my understanding, use it for parking and to hopefully expand the parking at Honecker High School, which is desperately needed. Um, but, um, pursuant to the Virginia Code, before the school, before the board can convey any real property, and they have to have a public hearing. So this would be just a conveyance of that property to the Russell County School Board for that use.
Okay, at this time, we'll open discussion, public hearing on the transferring of this, um, property to Honecker High School. It is right beside the gym. It's on the east side of the gym, and it will be used as parking, which is desperately needed. So if anyone in the public has a comment to say, please state your name and what you'd like to say about the transfer of this public property. State your name and address, please. All right, seeing none, we'll close the public comment on the transfer of the Honecker High School property. We need a mo, and I I didn't do a motion on air, but that's the budget later. We didn't. We don't need to. We don't do that. We'll do that on the sixteenth, I believe, twentieth. All right, we need a motion to transfer this property.
I'll make a motion.
I'll make a motion, Madam Chair.
David, do we have a second?
Second.
Steve, all right, all those in favor of transferring this property to Honecker High School? Ours?
I have a question.
Yes, okay, go ahead, sir. No, it's the double-wide, that white double-wide Barbara, at one time, it's right there.
Yes.
Okay, Carl?
Yes.
Lou?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Tim?
Yes.
And Rebecca, yes. All right, uh, next item on our agenda is our new business, which will be to approve the minutes. The first is for our regular May the 4th board meeting. Do I have a motion to accept those minutes as written?
Madam Chair, make a motion, will you? Approve the minutes, May 4, 2020.
All right, thank you, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Carl, was that you? I can't hear y'all, I'm sorry, these masks are hard, yeah, are hard. All right, okay, roll call with this, all in favor of approving the minutes for May the 4th? Ours?
Yes.
Carl?
Yes.
Lou?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Tim?
Yes.
And Rebecca, yes. All right, second set of minutes is for our May 20th budget workshop that we had. Do I have a motion to accept those minutes as they are written for the budget workshop?
So moved.
Tim, do we have a second?
Second.
Steve, any comments? All right, all those in favor of approving the May 20th meeting? Ours?
Yes.
Carl?
Yes.
Lou?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Tim?
Yes.
Rebecca, yes. All right, all in favor. All right, the next thing we have is approval of our expenditures, approve our bills. Do I have a motion for that? To approve our bills?
I'll make that motion.
Yeah, we have to pay those bills. All right, Carl, I have a mo, do I have a second?
Second.
Tim, all right, any discussion?
I just want to ask, is everything still in order and we're still in line with our bills considering the situation we find ourselves in? So are we, are we blowing the budget? Thank you.
All those in favor of approval of our expenditures? Ours?
Yes.
Carl?
Yes.
Lou?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Tim?
Yes.
And Rebecca, yes. All right, now we have our committee appointments for board consideration. And the first one we have is our Regional Industrial Authority, the CIFA. At this time, I'd like to table that because there's some circumstances that are with these. And I am going to contact the other two counties that are, that we are in partner with, that is Tasswell and Buchanan County, and to see what projects they have, what they're working on. And I'd just like to table these till our next, till my, next month. Okay, a motion, all right, do I have a motion to table this till next month?
I make a motion, we table the Regional Industrial Development Authority Board members until July.
Okay, because these two will stay in place, that's there now, and we'll just wait till we have an opportunity to speak with them. All right, do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, thank you, Tim. All right, any discussion? All right, all those in favor of just tabling this until next month? Ours?
Yes.
Carl?
Yes.
Lou?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Tim?
Yes.
And Rebecca, yes. So we'll just table this till next month. All right, the next point, set of appointments is the Cumberland Plateau Economic Development Commission. And we can take these one at a time. The first position, do we have any nominations for that first position? These all run out June 30th, 2020, and it will be for a one-year term.
Madam Chair, I'd like to reappoint Frank Horton.
Okay, Katie, should we do, just go ahead and do these one at a time, close this? Well, um,
We've got a vacancy.
We've got a vacancy and I need to turn the board over to leave on that because this is my slot. And I'd like to nominate some, well, I don't have to necessarily because this is not the same as our PSA board, is it? No. Okay. Okay, well, all right, with Frank Horton, we have one, we have appointment from Steve. We don't need a second, do we? On with this, all right, Steve's already nominated, made the motion for Frank.
I'll second, I'll make a motion that nomination cease and Frank be appointed by acclamation.
All right, all those in favor of that, favor of Frank Horton?
Uh, I don't.
Ours, Carl?
Yes.
Lou?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Tim?
Yes.
Rebecca, yes. All right, next one is for the vacancy of Ben Price. Tim?
Madam Chair, I'd like to nominate Tony Lambert for that.
Okay, and this is my district, all right? And I can second this, correct? To chair to? All right, thank you, Ours. All right, Ours will second it, yep, all right. All right, all those in favor of Tony Lambert? Ours?
Yes.
Carl?
Yes.
Lou?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Tim?
Yes.
And Rebecca, yes. All right, our next position, do we have a nomination for the third position?
I'd like to nominate Ron Blankenship.
Okay, do we have a second?
I'll second and also cease nominations.
All right, vote. All right, all those in favor of Ron, let's start with Ours?
Yes.
Carl?
Yes.
Lou?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Tim?
Yes.
Rebecca, yes. All right, our fourth position is Jim Eaton. Do we have a nomination for this fourth position?
I'll nominate Jim Eaton.
Okay.
Second.
Second. All right, you want to?
I'll make a motion that we nomination cease and we elect Jim Eaton by acclamation.
All right, Ours?
Yes.
Carl?
Yes.
Lou?
Yes.
David?
Madam Chair, I don't need to abstain, he's my family, my first cousin.
Okay. Steve?
Yes.
Tim?
Yes.
And Rebecca, yes. All right, we have our Cumberland Plateau Economic Board. All right, next positions are with the Library Board. We have two positions available, they're three-year terms, and they all end June 30th. All right, do we have any nominations for the first position that is open?
I'd like to nominate Yvonne Dye.
All right, do we have a second?
Second.
Lou? All right, all those in favor of Ms. Dye, we'll start with Ours?
Yes.
Carl?
Yes.
Lou?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Tim?
Yes.
And Rebecca, yes. All right, our second position, do we, it's also a three-year term and it is ending June 30th and it will be for three years.
I'd like to nominate Susan Breeding.
All right, David, do we have a second?
Second.
Second, Lou? All right, all those in favor of this position? Ours?
Yes.
Carl?
Yes.
Lou?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Steve?
Madam Chair, I'll abstain from this one since she's a family member.
All right, Tim?
Yes.
And Rebecca, yes. All right, we filled our Library Board. All right, next we have is the Russell County Public Service Authority. The first position is, I believe, Tim, it is in your district, correct?
Yes, but that was not, that was the at-large appointment. It's in my district, but that was the at-large.
Oh, that's right, it is, that's correct. Okay, that's right. Okay, okay, that's right, I'm sorry, I forgot. Okay, we'll have, we'll open the floor now for this one position. It's a four-year term and it did end June the 24th, 2020.
I nominate Q. Porter.
All right, do we have a second?
Second.
Lou? All right, all those in favor, let's start with Ours?
Yes.
Carl?
Yes.
Lou?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Tim?
Yes.
And Rebecca, yes. All right, the second position, it's a four-year term. And now Lou, this is, this is your district, correct?
This is my district and I would like to nominate David Edmonds Jr. for the four-year term ending, well, in 2024.
All right, do we have a second?
Second.
Steve? All right, all those in favor? Ours?
Yes.
Carl?
Yes.
Lou?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Tim?
Yes.
And Rebecca, yes. All right, now, the next position is the one that is in my district in a vacancy due to the death of Mr. Terry Powers, and I'm going to turn the, uh, Over to you, Steve, please.
Thank you. We have a vacancy for the PSA position in District 6. We'll open it up for nominations now.
At this time, I will nominate, this is my district, and I will nominate Donnie Christian. He has served on this, in this board position before, I think it's about 12 years? 18 years, okay. He served on Russell County and on the Belfast-Rosedale boards. All right, I'll make that nomination, do we have a second?
I'll second it.
All right, David?
Okay, roll call vote, Ours?
Yes.
Abs, Carl? He needs abstain.
Yeah, you have to abstain, that's right. Carl?
Yes.
Lou?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Rebecca?
Yes.
Tim?
Yes.
Steve, yes.
All right, all right, thank you, sir.
Madam Chair, I'll turn it back over to you.
All right, thank you, sir. Next committee we have is our Spearhead Trails, and we have a three-year term. It ended in June, so the floor is open for Spearhead Trails, it is one position.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we reappoint Teddy Clevenger to represent Russell County on the Spearhead Trails.
All right, do we have a second?
Second.
All right, Ours? All right, all those in favor of Terry Clevenger? Ours?
Yes.
Carl?
Yes.
Lou?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Tim?
Yes.
And Rebecca, yes. All right, the next we have is, I know we received a letter from Regina with the Appalachian Agency for Senior Citizens. It is a two-year term, and she did send a letter asking that we reappoint all four of these. She's got some kind of training in July and she has appointed some of them on a financial board that she will have this.
Madam Chair, could, could we appoint these all or just reappoint them as a group?
Yes.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Steve, thank y'all, that makes it much easier with these because she did send that letter. All right, we have, Steve made the motion, Tim seconded it, all in favor of appointing these, Slate Larry Burton, Alice Mead, Wayne Boston, and Pat Gray. Ours?
Yes.
Carl?
Yes.
Lou?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Tim?
Yes.
And Rebecca, yes. All right, our next group of folks is Tourism Advisory Committee. Steve, are you ready? Mr. Brandon Blavens is in your district. Are you ready to appoint someone or you want us to hold that one? Okay. Okay. Okay, all right. Okay, so we will, we'll leave that one open then. All right, the next one, we have one other position, it is for a four-year term. Do we have a nomination for this position?
That came out of, that came out of my district. Jason Gullett resigned, and I do have an application in the packet for Maddy Gordon, who runs Clinch Life and runs a lot of expeditions up and down the Clinch. And so I'd like to make her nomination for the Tourism Advisory Committee, please.
Lou, do we have a second?
I'm second then, make a motion, we elect Maddie by acclamation.
All right, all those in favor, let's start, Ours?
Yes.
Carl?
Yes.
Lou?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Tim?
Yes.
And Rebecca, yes. All right, that ends our appointments, and Steve, you get your folks for that next one and we'll. Motion for her. All right, next is citizens' comment period. Is there anyone in the lobby that would like to make a citizens' comment? Three, three minutes, state your name and your address. All right, seeing none, we'll close our citizens' comment period. Constitutional officers, don't believe we have any of those folks. Next, we have our county attorney's report and request. It's Katie.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The first thing that I have that's attached to the board's agenda is a, is a proposed resolution. I know the board addressed during the public hearing for the continuity of government ordinance, which really had, was something different, the concerns that we had over the disparity between the situation here in Southwest Virginia and that in Northern Virginia and Richmond. And this, this resolution basically states what our position is here and that, you know, what the cases are and what the, what the concerns are. And is a resolution, if passed, it would be a statement to the Governor about our position. Again, I do think sometimes there's a misconception over the amount of control that this board has, which is very little in this situation. It doesn't matter if every one of you disagreed with the Governor, you can't. What you say doesn't trump what he says, but you can make your position known by passing a resolution. And that's, that's really what this is, and it just, and really, and presents the facts as what they are here. I mean, that there are currently no cases here and that, you know, it reflects that, you know, we're very close to Tennessee and West Virginia and North Carolina, and those states have, you know, are allowed to open and, and we are not. So I mean, that, that's basically what this ordinance, or, excuse me, it's not an ordinance, what this resolution is. But it does, as far as from a legal standpoint, I'm fine with it.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion, we approve this resolution.
I'll second it.
Okay, just a second, Steve and David, all right, any discussion?
I would just say that this sort of mimics Tasswell County's resolution. And I think Buchanan County, if they haven't done one, they're getting ready to do one. So it's so, okay, they've already done one, okay. So that shows some uni, unity within the Cumberland Plateau District. I don't know about Dickinson County, what they've done, they're kind of on their own.
I don't think that they have yet, but their, their meeting schedule is a little different than ours. So I do think Lonzo had told me, and he can correct me if I'm wrong, that Washington County had passed one as well. Did Washington pass that or theirs? I thought you told me they had, I just didn't want to misstate it.
You know, considering the number of cases, we haven't had an act, we haven't had a case since 15th of May. And eight cases out of 40-some-odd thousand cases, it's, it's kind of ridiculous. And I read Dr. Cantrell's letter and very disappointed in that. I mean, it's, it seemed like two pages of coming up with an excuse why you couldn't support it. So, you know, that's my statement, so.
All right, any further discussion? Okay, we've had Okay, we've had our motion. All those, Ours?
Yes.
Carl?
Abstain.
Okay. Lou?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Tim?
Yes.
And Rebecca? Yes. All right, next is the Cumberland Plateau Waste Management Agreement user, user agreement. One more time, Katie.
The, the user agreement and, um, I've presented the board with a copy. This is something that has been worked over and over and over and I think we found, and, and unfortunately, we've had situations where attorneys have changed and so that's changed everything. But it, it has allowed us to hopefully work out an agreement that will not require a lot of change going forward. And I am, um, the, the document that you have in front of you tonight still has the track changes, but I'm okay with the proposed changes as far as, um, the review of the agreement and how the administrative budget is going to be reviewed. Um, I would ask that if this agreement, if there's a motion made to approve this agreement, that it would be a motion to approve the user agreement subject to final approval of this board of the, um, operations agreement. That is a document that is referenced in the user agreement and I, I, I just received a copy of that today. Um, I think it's kind of been overlooked in this process. But in just doing a, a, a brief review of that document, it references a schedule, a fee schedule that is not included. So I can't, I could not, um, advise you to approve the operations agreement without that attached fee schedule. But that's something we should be able to get resolved, um, by July. But, um, I do, I am, I'm fine with the language of the user agreement, but there does need to be that exception that it doesn't approve the operations agreement.
Madam Chair, I'll make the motion that we approve the user agreement pending final approval of the operations agreement by legal counsel.
All right.
Second.
Tim, second. And Steve, any further discussion? All right, all those, uh, and approval of this agreement one more time after Katie reviews it. Ours?
I'm going abstain.
Okay. Carl?
Yes.
Lou?
Yes, upon approval.
Okay.
Full review.
Steve?
Yes.
Tim?
Yes.
And Rebecca? Yes, Ms. Long is legal counsel approves.
And can I make a comment here?
Yes.
Uh, just wanted to let everyone know that one of the members of this board passed away Friday, Earl Rife, uh, yeah. Earl passed away. So just ask everyone to remember his family in their prayers.
Yeah, Earl Rife, Earl.
Buchanan County.
Oh, that's saying. Yep. All right, um, personnel policy?
Um, thank you, Madam Chair. Um, I have continued to work on the personnel policy. I, I, I am going to ask again that you, um, wait until July. I do hope that I can have everything fully looked at again. I know this process has taken a, a little bit of time, but you, this isn't a document that you want to be changing every year. So you want to make sure everything's good. Lonzo, Lonzo has made a lot of the changes that, that I had requested. Um, and so I just want to make sure that they're all there. Obviously, the personnel policy is very important. It dictates the, the relationship you have with your employees on all of their matters. And so you definitely want that to be, um, the, as, as close to perfect as possible. So I do think that we'll be ready, hopefully, to, um, to put that for you, before you for approval in July. No, it's just a, it's just a report, so, I mean, for me.
All right, next we have our county administrat- anything else, Katie, that you had under you, under our county attorney? Not this time, okay? Now we have our county administrators' reports and requests. And the first one is the, um, CDBG planning grant. Ours? I mean, excuse me, Lonzo.
Thank you, Madam Chair. First on the county administrator's reports and requests, it, uh, is another long issue that the board of supervisors has been dealing with is the Cleveland Water Sewer Treatment Plant. So this is a report for the, uh, the 2020 DGB, uh, planning grant approval for, to do a study, the engineering study, the PER, on way the town of Cleveland needs to proceed. This is a 100% grant, uh, by, you know, DHCD to be able to look at and pick an engineer that, uh, that will look at this system, not just the sewer treatment plant, but the system as a whole. So, uh, this is just a report to ensure that the, the citizens of Russell County that this is only, we're only a financial steward, a financial conduit for this and for the oversight. And that Cumberland Plateau Planning District is, you know, uh, administering this and we're just the financial steward. So, uh,
You will meet next week, is that correct?
Yes, ma'am.
If, with Mr. Baldwin, Cumberland Plateau?
Uh, my staff right now is trying to set up a, um, uh, interviews with, we had three candidates that were, that submitted RFPs for the PER and we'll be setting up interviews as soon as we get all the engineers in alignment schedules along with Cumberland Planet, Cumberland Plateau Planning District.
Right, and I had asked Mr. Lovelace if he would sit in on the opening of those bids. And so I'm going to ask him if he don't care if you'll sit in there again, just to keep us informed and keep us going on this.
Yes, ma'am.
And Steve has been listening in on the, every Thursday, phone conversations for us.
Next on the county administrator reports and requests is, um, the, uh, actually it is the Russell County Emergency Operation Plan. This was the 488 Emergency Operation Plan that was put in your packet that, uh, I know that all of y'all have read. So, uh, I know, not to be facetious, this is a report, this gives you an opportunity. We knew that we were going to reconvene, this needed to be approved by July the first. So at that time, an opportunity, uh, that I would like to bring, uh, Jess Powers back, the emergency management coordinator then, and that way he can answer all your questions and by the time you've had time to review it.
Well, if it's my understanding, uh, correct me, um, he has to have this approved by us by July 1st. So we probably need, on our next meeting, don't forget, we all need to have him come in and explain a little bit to us and we can vote for it if we look.
Yeah. Yes, yes, ma'am. Next on the county administrator reports and requests is the Town Eleven Abstracts of Votes. Uh, this is the, uh, Town Council Votes. This is a, uh, just a report of the, uh, votes, how they came in and the candidates that were elected. Which was, uh, Elijah Leonard, uh, Scott Gilmer, William Brad Lambert were the top three. Uh, along with Kevin Ferguson and Hassel Cagley. So. Next on the county administrator request is, I'm sorry, I, I didn't mean to leave out Mr. Tony Doty. He is the mayor of the Town of Lebanon, unopposed. Next on the county administrator reports is the VRA amended and restated support agreement of the Southwest Virginia Regional Jail Authority and Russell County. This is the, in, in layman's terms, this is the refinancing of the regional jail. These are the documents that we had submitted, actually last Thursday, we had to get them in before the bond council of VRA. Uh, I need approval on the amended and restated support agreement. This is the first one and the, uh, certification on the second one, so.
So move.
Tim? All right, do we have a second?
Second.
Lou? All right, any discussion? Can you tell them how much it's going to help, uh, bring down the payments on the regional jail? They helped. It did, they got a lower interest rate, which is nice for us, for the whole area. All right, all those in favor of this support agreement? Ours?
Yes.
Carl?
Yes.
Lou?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Tim?
Yes.
And Rebecca? Yes.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Next is the VRA certification of the County of Russell, Virginia. This is the second part of it. This is the certification of it for the VRA loan for the County of Russell. I need a motion for approval on that.
So move, Madam Chair.
Steve, do we have a second?
Second.
David, thank you. Discussion? All right, all those in favor? Ours?
Yes.
Carl?
Yes.
Lou?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Tim?
Yes.
And Rebecca? Yes.
And like Madam Chair mentioned before, uh, they are doing the closing. We don't have the total savings yet. We should be by the time we reconvene and, uh, bond council is going to provide that. Um, next on the county administrator request is the, uh, Russell County Fiscal Year 2021 Budget Public Hearing. This is the last one and at, at the board's discretion, this one is the last required one. It must be set and published for seven consecutive days in an, in a local newspaper. So the earliest that we can get it within the Lebanon News and advertised will be the 15th. So the week of the 15th or later is, would be the earliest. So, uh, ask permission, you know, a motion for, uh, the week of the 15th through the 19th.
Um, is, excuse me, Madam Chair, I'm sorry. Um, is that going to be enough time for the public to know that we're scheduling that? I know it's going to be on social media, on the webpage and everything else, but, and I know we've scheduled a meeting for that date already for our budget hearing. So what date is, what day of the week is the 15th?
The 15th is on a Monday. That's, I'm not saying that is the day we have to do it. I'm saying that's the earliest we can do it, have enough time to advertise.
Okay, so we have to push it two or three days on so the public will have enough time?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
So the week of the, you know, the 15th through preferably the 26th. But it has to be approved by the 30th, by the Code of Virginia. So. Big it, yes. Yes, y'all can do that. Next on the county administrator reports is a, um, is a Russell County Planning Commission Plaid on Glenview Drive. This is a request by the Planning Commission for a, uh, division of separation of plats on the Glen, uh, Glenview Drive. Need a motion to approve.
So move.
Second.
I'll second, but that's not my district. Who's, where is that?
The Glenview Drive? This is 911, I'm trying. It's, it is, it's in Lebanon District. It is in Steve's. It's in Steve's.
Like, that makes a difference.
It's in the Lebanon District.
It is in the Lebanon District.
The Planning Commission sent us the plats to look at. They've done their work, they've done their part, yes.
Addison survey, they did the surveys.
They had it surveyed. All right, all those in favor? Ours?
Yes.
Carl?
Yes.
Lou?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Tim?
Yes.
And Rebecca? Yes.
Ma'am, that concludes the, uh, county administrator reports and request.
All right, do we have any matters that anybody wants to discuss with the board? Ours? Carl?
No, ma'am.
Lou?
Uh, just to mention one or two things. I'm still having complaints come in concerning, um, the overburden of garbage and, uh, the county administrator knows about that and it's a problem. So just to say publicly that we know there's, um, there's a lot of tonnage coming into the sites in District Two. We understand that there's problems and we're also trying to work those out. So I just wanted to let the public know that that's being done. And, uh, I'm still getting complaints about noise and dogs. So just to let you know that.
Uh, just got one thing. Uh, if it'd be okay with the board to send Earl's wife something in regards to card or something in regards to that. I, I was looking at Tim a minute ago and after he said that, he's committed his whole life, uh, to the Waste Management Authority. And I think it'd be good from our county perspective to send a condolence, uh, card or something if it would be okay.
Amen. Yeah. I looked at those trash numbers and it looks to me like we're about 50% more than what we were over the last five months in 2019, in five months in 2019. Is that, I, I know some of it's COVID related because I've contributed to it. What about, and, and it looks like some of the sites are, are more than others. And they seem to be the sites closest to county lines. So you think we're getting a lot of outside trash?
Yes, sir. That's what's happening. A lot of the other counties, Russell County, even during this time, we kept operating and we kept the, the disposal sites open and we kept running at our same operations. Some of these, we even extended and put people in the sites. But in that, we got, other counties were closing theirs down during and restricting their hours. And, you know, not to say anything about our neighbors, but, you know, uh, the other counties did. So we were picking up a lot of their trash, like you said, 50% above the normal tonnage. Well, I know we're taking a lot of heat from it. And that's an, that's another factor. Absolutely correct. Like Mr., it's like Mr. Christian said, he, and Steve, everybody's cleaning out their garage. And, and I thought for a couple of weeks, everybody in Russell County had cleaned out every garage they had. But apparently we're picking up a couple, three or four other counties around us too.
I'm, I'm going to build another garage so I can clean that out. Uh, I've got one other thing.
Yes, sir.
That, are, are we still showing that $700,000 hole in our budget projected?
Right, right now, on the budget, like I, during the last budget workshop meeting that we projected, utilizing, uh, both myself and the commissioner of revenue and the treasurer got back together. Based off the new numbers that we're getting, it is going down. By the time we have the public hearing, we'll have true numbers. I can give you the numbers that we got today.
I, I, I'm not concerned with it exactly, but we, we've got a substantial hole in the budget that can only be filled by that COVID money. That cares.
Yes. One, well, let, let me explain that a little bit too.
But I want, I want to understand, I want the, the folks out here to understand, it's not because we haven't done our job. It's because of the sales tax, a decrease in the sales tax revenues that we haven't seen. And that, isn't that correct? That's what I was led to believe.
Yes, and, and let me, I, I heard the concerns of the residents of Russell County when they were sitting here making their public comments. But let me get some insight into this. The COVID money is not here to replace or, or supplement our budget. What you've got to remember is when this emergency first came down, we dedicated a lot of resources to protect the Russell County residents. We may have only had eight cases, but every case that we went out on, our first responders had to be in full PPE to be safe. We did not know whether they, there was an issue or COVID to protect our, our sheriffs, our, our, our squads, our fire, our emergency management, and, and everyone that worked within the county. We, our staff had to be geared up. We had none of this in our inventory at the time. So the County of Russell expended a large amount of money to put everything in place. This is not, only thing that the COVID does is reimburse us for what we have done. It is not replacing our funding and our revenue.
Exactly.
If, if, when you look at the budget, when you look at our, our revenue numbers and when you look at it, when we reconvene, we're in alignment. We are in alignment right now with what we are projecting.
Even with the sales tax?
We're within a marginal of error, but we're, we're still working the area and, and, but that's.
Basically, what, what, what you're saying then is we spent close somewhere in the neighborhood of 500, 700,000 dollars on COVID-19. And this CARES Act money will reimburse that amount, so it'll make us hole in the budget.
That is correct.
But we also can spend it within the first, any expenses, COVID-related expenses in the first six months from July to December. We can be reimbursed for that as well.
Yes, and that way you're not spending Russell County's taxpayers to pay for this PPE and other issues that we have to do. We will go back and what you've expended, what you put in place. You've got to remember, Russell County was the first ones, we, we thought this was a real major issue. We didn't know there was going to be eight cases. We didn't know there was going to be 8,000. At the time, we had to protect the citizens of Russell County. At that time, at, at the full impact, at the time, they were projecting 2 million cases in this, in the United States. And then you heard different numbers, but if we had one case or if we had 8,000 cases. if we had one case, or if we had 8,000 cases, our job was to protect the residents of Russell County. So, we expended, the Russell County Board of Supervisors expended $500,000, $700,000. That's just not on masks, like everybody thought. We had to, we had to bring the sheriff department out, we had to bang RSOs, we had to put extra security back into courthouses. We had to make sure that our employees were protected, the public was protected, and that's what we incurred. And you've got to remember, at the time, this PPE and E was not available. You had to pay premium prices for it. There was people ordering from China, you know, South Korea. You, we had to, to be very innovative in, in, in the mechanisms and how we purchased this without expending or being wise financial stewards of Russell County taxpayers during this time. But we did it. You look at the numbers as being bad numbers, us having only eight cases? Well, I look at it differently. I look at it that Russell County did what it's supposed to do, and we only had eight cases.
Well, let me ask you, sales tax revenues have to be down some. They have to be.
Here, the sales tax right now, today, and I can give you the numbers right here, is what we ran today. When I pull this up, you will see the sales tax is down 8%. Right there it is.
Well, I'm shocked. I thought it was a lot more than that.
It is. But if you look at minerals and tax and our public services, I'm over 10%.
Let me ask you this, or the state, is the state submitting, or are we getting paid by the state on time now?
The state is starting to pick up, yes, sir. Yes, sir. And that was one of the concerns. When we were looking at this budget, the state of Virginia last month was showing a 27% drop in revenue, which was a 700 million drop in sales tax. All the towns, and all 133 towns and counties and municipalities was looking at this projection. Now, even with what we got now, to be able to take the COVID to replace what Russell County implemented and expended for their citizens, this point going forward from July 1 through next June, we're going to have to be very conservative. Like we said in the workshop, we're going to have to go through this month by month to make sure that our revenue for right now is going to stay in place. You've got to remember, Russell County has not increased real estate in 20 years. So, I don't know why we're mismanagement, but I think that's a financial benchmark or a financial accomplishment that many counties can't set up and say. But again, eight cases, I look at it as a success, and so would Dr. Cantrell. Thank you. I didn't mean to go in so long. Thank you.
That's it, I'm through.
Yeah, I do, and it's trash-related as well. And Lonzo, I know I've worn you out over this, but I just found out that Moxon was closed again yesterday. So, let's, let's do whatever, you know, we can, we can put side attendance there with the difference that we save in the tonnage that we're, you know, having to pay for, so that our people can throw their trash away.
Now, you see, and that's why I sent out the tonnage report, too, when Brian sent it to me. I said, "The board needs to see this." Now, you see what I'm referring to. I can put a side attendant there to man that will offset, you know what the price per ton is from the landfill? I can make the numbers work and still have it part of our operations and still make sure they're there and they're open. Me and Brian discussed this one. I agree with Tim. That's one of the great budget challenges that we took on early on as a board, and saved a tremendous amount of money for the taxpayer. And, you know, I think some of that money needs to be directed back toward the trash. And I know we've used a lot of it to help balance the budget. I understand it fully. On another comment, I just want to reiterate this. You know, I'm not real pleased with our governor. I'm very disappointed because there's no actions in place to treat Southwest Virginia different than other areas.
We'll see.
And I just got real, I'm real irritated with it, the way he's handled the matters and stuff like that. But I understand fully about the PPE and all that. I do understand it, but I'm frustrated with him. He's not treating us fairly, and he's not treating us like, you know, what, and all, if you, anybody go to Bristol on Saturday? Okay, you go to Tennessee, 90% of the people in this area was over there eating at them restaurants. And I'm just, and I'm frustrated. I got frustrated early on just thinking about it in my mind. But I understand fully that mechanism and all that, but I'm very frustrated with this governor and how he's treated us down here in Southwest Virginia. I'm not doing that politically or anything. I'm, it's personal. I'm upset with the way that his administration has handled us down here in this corner.
When he's making excuses, it's because we're, we're different. But, okay, so we're different, so let's, let's be treated different.
But originally, he said, "Oh, we all have to go, and we're not going to pick winners and losers." So, he made everybody a loser. But then, when Northern Virginia asked, "We can't go back in," bang, it changed right then.
Exactly. So, let's be fair, you know, we are different. So, let's be different when it's good for us, as well as when it's bad for us.
Yes, ma'am.
Next, I guess we need a motion, wait, wait, no, to reconvene to continue our budget hearing.
And emergency management plan.
And the emergency management plan. And earliest, I'm looking, if we put it in the paper for next week, for it to run, the 17th, that's a Wednesday?
That is correct, ma'am. The paper comes out, we in machines, on every Tuesday.
On the night?
So, that gives us a week.
And then we'll run, that'll give us to the 17th?
Or later.
Or later. Is 17th okay with everybody? That's a Wednesday?
Do we need to schedule, well, this is scheduled in the public hearing, the final public hearing.
Final public hearing.
To reconvene and schedule the final public hearing. I'll make that motion.
Yes, sir.
All right.
What time?
Do we, do we need executive session, Katie? Do you think there'll be anything you, you probably need to come back and give us a few things?
Maybe, maybe I would schedule it at that time.
Okay.
You don't have to make it part of the motion.
Okay.
Reconvene is not special.
No, we just reconvene.
At what time?
Okay.
What time?
All right.
I'm just thinking, we're going to have the executive.
Five?
Well, five.
I want to say something about the track. They have someone on the phone, they have someone open the truck. Because I told them, I said, "This is the track."
Yep. Take the, yep.
I think they should, someone will give them responsibility to take the.
They, they do have.
They do.
They're supposed to be doing it.
Should be that, I mean, once, two, three days. Yeah, someone should, give all of the, approach, give instructions, take first number, show them.
Okay. All right, well, okay, let's go back, please. Steve, we had a motion for him, that we will reconvene on June the 17th.
At 5:00 p.m.
At 5:00 p.m. All right.
For the purpose of...
For the budget.
Public hearing, for the final public hearing for the budget.
Uh-huh. All right, do we have a second?
That'll be for executive session at 5:00, and then regular meeting at 6:00.
Uh-huh, yep.
I'll second that.
All right, Tim, all those in favor? Horace?
Yes.
Carl?
I have a question there. Did we get both of those parts in there?
Yeah.
The emergency plan, was it in there? I didn't hear that part. Emergency operation plan.
It'll be for, that, he'll bring that to us, too. It'll be the budget, the final review of the budget, the emergency plan, other things we have to...
It's a public hearing.
Yes.
We're just, we're reconvening, so we could take up any light and honor agenda, can't we?
Yes, yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
That's why we're sitting there, why we said that.
The final.
All right.
Yes.
Carl, Lou?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Tim?
Yes.
And Rebecca, yes. All right, Wednesday, the 17th, at 5 o'clock.